I call this Altoona City Council meeting to order Monday, November fourteenth at six P. M. We'll now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, would you take the roll call, please?
Councilman Beatty.
Here.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Here.
Councilman Carper.
Here.
Councilman Ellis.
Here.
Councilman Ickes.
Here.
Councilman Kelly.
Here.
Mayor Pacifico.
Here.
After last month's meeting, we had an executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation, and will now open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to address council, you may come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to under five minutes.
Yeah, hi, can everybody hear me? Okay, yeah, my name's Brian Bender. I run a couple companies, real estate companies here for rentals, around two hundred and seventy units. I'd like to go over with a couple issues that I'm having challenges with, with the city, if you guys don't mind. One of the issues we just had inquired was with Scott Brown. We have a building on Broad Avenue that we are renovating, putting maybe a half a million into it, and Scott came into my building to do the inspection, and upon in the building, disclosed to me that he could come into my building at any given time with or without me. I threw him out of my building. He had no right to say that to me, but that's with Scott Brown. I have a couple more issues with him as well, but he got thrown out of the building. Then I called to have a re-inspect for inside the building for the water line that took about thirty seconds to do. I have not yet with Rebecca, I've talked to her a couple times about rescheduling it so we could get this done. I have yet to have the inside of the building re-inspected yet. The water tap, yeah, has not been completed by inspection, and I, let me see here, yeah, after I went down, I went down to the office and told Rebecca about the inquiry, what had happened with Scott Brown, and I never got a response back from her or a reschedule. I'm just going down through my list here. At one point in time, they had me on this Facebook, they have a, they have a Facebook thing with landlords. I guess if you got a building that needs adjusted, well, I went to Rebecca and told them to take that down. I had one of my properties on this, on this Facebook thing, and I went back the next day and told her to take that down. I thought it was inconsiderate. We do, we do everything that Code tells us to do. We get a printout, we do everything. We don't, we don't nickel and dime, we don't penny pinch, we don't argue about what needs to be done with our units unless it can't be done. So, on, on top of this, I went downtown. When, when you have issues with Rebecca, there are people that are behind, that are in charge of her, and the response has been zero. I've gone into Omar's office three or four times, have talked to his secretary. I got one call from him that was really early on, but then I kept having issues with, with issues with Code. Three times later, I would go in his office, never got a call back from him. I asked his secretary, who his boss was, and she said the mayor. I had a, I wanted a call back from the mayor, I never heard back from the mayor, and this is also too concerning a property on Eleventh Avenue that was for sale. It's a commercial property that the city was selling, and I wanted to talk to Omar about purchasing it. The bid was, the offer was only like five thousand dollars. I thought, you know, let's go in, let's buy the building, but I couldn't get ahold of either one of them to try to work this out, to see the process that I needed to go through to obtain this building that was owned by the city. Also too, we just bought a building on eleven oh, eleven hundred thirteenth Avenue. We just, we just put, we paid three hundred and forty thousand for the building. Now, Code knew at the same time that we were buying the building. I went down a week prior to and said, hey, we're buying this building, you know, if anything's going on, just please contact me. No, I get a three hundred and forty thousand dollar building, I have something stapled to the woodside on my building, so I went into, into Rebecca and said, you know, why? I guess they're all confused in there, sometimes they don't know what they're doing or who's doing what, but with three hundred and forty thousand dollar building, I don't really want anything stapled to my building. For three hundred and forty thousand dollars, it is probably a pretty good building, and it is downtown. We just bought that off of Jim Colombo. Also too, I've, I've talked to Rebecca about having their office talk about me. I have other landlords that have come to me and have, and have told me exactly what Code is in there saying about me, about what I own, what I don't own. That's nobody's business, especially for Code to be disclosing or talking about me, because I don't talk about them. On eleven twelve, eleven eighteen downtown Twelfth Street, we have, I call it the Thompson's Building. We, we've owned that now for about a year. Behind me, I will introduce you to my architect when I'm done. We're right in the phase, our, our prints are in Pittsburgh right now, and we don't have any control over when they come back and when they don't come back to us, but we finally got Broad Avenue done, that's great, I'm pleased we were able to move on that one. But, on the ninth, I got a letter from Code about this building, wanting me to fix and repair items that are on this building that are in the blueprints for us. We're redoing, we're putting probably about one point five million into the building, and Code knows that, so on the ninth, and I'm thinking what's happening is they're mad at me for getting my attorney involved and for getting other people involved in this issue, and I just think they're mad at me, so on the ninth of November, I get a letter in the mail about eleven twelve dash eleven eighteen Twelfth Street, and they know we're in the process of fixing the building up with blueprints. We can't do anything right now because all the prints are in, are in Pittsburgh. Also too, this is why I know I'm being, being addressed when I shouldn't be. I bought a house over in East Hudson Avenue, so.
Mr. Bender, you're, I'm sorry, your five minutes are up.
Okay, I get a letter from Code, and they're talking to me about a rental. It's a house I bought to live in on East Hudson Avenue, and I get a, I get a letter in the mail about, about Code telling me that I'm using it as a rental, so I'm done. Thank you for letting me speak, guys. I'm gonna have my architect here speak next.
Mr. Bender, I just want to let you know, you did retain attorney ad dink, and we received the letter about the complaints with Codes, and we are reviewing the matter, and we will be responding to attorney ad dink. Once you have an attorney enter the fray, we gotta go through him.
One other thing hasn't been disclosed to him, is some of the stuff is recent.
Joseph Aricco, architect, I'm just here to tell you, we are working on the drawings. He did make a mistake, they are not in the codes yet because I was out of commission for over two weeks with COVID, so I'm a little bit behind, but we're having all sorts of logistic problems with it since we have, the building is built to the lot lines, so how do you build a stairway in the back and everything when you can't access it? So that's what's part of it's taking so long, is figuring out how to do some of this stuff. But the plans are ninety percent done at this point. If anybody cares to look at them, I'll show them to you. Any questions? We're gonna have like twenty-four apartments in it and other places. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Ed Cruz, eighteen thirty North Fourth Avenue. I'm gonna read from my phone. I have a few reasons to be here tonight. The most important to me is to tell the mayor and a few council members that before you criticize me, before you criticize me, maybe you should look at the way the city handles variances and zonings. In the last two months, businesses have had to reapply for variance because the businesses were closed more than a year, the plumbing business on Kettle Street and the Phoenix Restaurant. Two other businesses on Kettle Street also had to do the same thing, the transmission shop and the legacy auto repair. This is why I paid for rezoning, and then some of you said I should get a variance. Maybe the city should do away with all the boards and handle it within council. You are the elected official, not the ones on the variance board. Also, I would like to have, I met with Nate and the mayor at my property. The night I came for my meeting, there was neighbors there telling you how bad the, the intersection is, the water is, well, all that water runs onto my property, so I met with Matt and Nate, and since this last storm, even more has happened. The only way onto my property is the alley. My alley is washed out. I think my alley needs to be fixed and paved because that's the only way in and out of those properties that I own. Seventeenth Street, the water runs from Smithwell and across Seventeenth Street, is not stopped and comes into my property, so I think the city needs to control that also. But as far as the zoning, I really think that council needs to handle all of that. Thanks.
Hi, good evening. My name's Crystal Dyer. I'm a landlord and investor. My business name is Princess Property Management. I have been in the investment property management for over fifteen years. I have over approximately fifty rentals in the Altoona and surrounding areas. I'm having a lot of issues with Codes being, not enforcing the same policy for everyone. In the past, I had a good relationship with the old city manager, Ken Decker, and John Plous. Little background how this retaliation started. I had, I had an issue with a blighted property over on Bell Avenue. I reached out to Rebecca and Scott Campanera for over a year. Nothing was done about this. I finally made a post on shameful properties regarding this property. Within two days, the trailer that was falling on my property and was full of trash was taken care of thanks to the mayor helping and Dave Butterbaugh as well, but the issue was resolved. Ever since then, I have had nothing but retaliation from Scott Campanera and with Codes in general. Since, since the post, Scott has been hostile and a bad temper, and learning of his criminal record and for the safety of my tenants, I requested that he does no inspections on my property. I filed a complaint with Codes regarding a property next door to one of my rentals. Scott told the person who made the complaint, I started getting harassing messages from him. I filed a complaint with Rebecca, nothing was done. When something goes to Rebecca, she's very argumentative, gruff. I feel everything with her is a fight with her. She is very vindictive. I had an issue in the past with Scott Brown not doing his inspections in a timely manner on two different occasions and had to get the mayor involved. It's sad that I have to get the mayor involved in order for the city employees to do their job. I've made numerous calls into Omar's office on three separate occasions, no return phone calls. One code officer is unlicensed and writing citations on my properties. My biggest concern is retaliation and select and targeted enforcement. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
There's no more public comment, we will close the floor and move on to the resolutions. Linda?
Resolution A is approving the minutes of the Altoona City Council meeting held Tuesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Item B is appointing Dave Beetar to the Altoona Parking Authority to fill the unexpired term of Chris Fusco. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January twenty twenty-four. Item C is appointing the city manager Omar Strom to the Altoona Parking Authority to fill the unexpired term of Colin Reinhardt. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January twenty twenty-five. Item D is authorizing the city solicitor Tom Finn to execute the contract in PennDOT's ECMS system for the Fifth Avenue Bridge Over Mill Run replacement project in the amount of fifty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars payable from the general fund and highway aid. Item D is authorizing the city manager to sign all doc, necessary documents associated with PennDOT's traffic signal maintenance agreement, which covers all signals within the city of Altoona and for the city clerk to attest to same. Item F is approving an agreement of sale between the city and Pennsy Property, Pennsy Partners for the purchase of property located at fifteen hundred eleventh Avenue in the amount of sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars payable from ARPA funds and further authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute the documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item G is approving a repository bid in the amount of two hundred dollars submitted by Randy Folkler of nineteen eighteen Fifth Avenue for property located at nineteen fourteen Fifth Avenue and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item H is approving a repository bid in the amount of five hundred dollars submitted by Andrew Topper of two thousand nine eleventh Avenue for property located at two thousand eleven eleventh Avenue and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item I is approving a repository bid in the amount of four hundred dollars submitted by Don Kobel Senior of seven ten Fifth Avenue for property located at nine twenty Fifth Avenue and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. And item J is approving the twenty twenty-three to twenty-seven capital improvement program, which includes a reasonable, prioritized, and practical list of capital projects to be undertaken by the city over the next five years. The projects are designed to preserve the city's infrastructure, ensure the safety and efficiency of city personnel, and maintain the quality of life in the community. Are there any items, any deletions, or anything that needs to be pulled for a separate vote? Hearing none, I will call for the consent vote. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilman Carper.
Yes.
Councilman Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
The consent vote passes seven to zero. We have seven ordinances on the agenda for introduction, and the first one is an ordinance of the city of Altoona, a home rural municipality in the county of Blair Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending ordinance number fifty-seven oh seven and authorizing the financing of an amount not to exceed four million dollars for the purchase of various pieces of equipment to include pumper and ladder fire trucks through a master equipment lease purchase agreement with Community First National Bank of Manhattan, Kansas, providing for the proper officials of the city to execute all documents involved, repealing all inconsistent ordinance, providing for severability of provisions and an effective date. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
This ordinance was introduced by Councilman Butterbaugh. The second ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Altoona, Blair County, Pennsylvania, which amends chapter five seventy dash eleven, administration and enforcement of the Altoona City Code with respect to residential rental and inspection to provide for additional enforcement and administration provisions regarding revocation and reinstatement of conditional housing permits and residential rental licenses. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
This ordinance was introduced by Mayor Pacifico. The third ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Altoona, Blair County, Pennsylvania, which amends chapter two seventy, construction standards, Article Two Building Construction, Sections two seventy dash seven through two seventy dash ten, and Article Three Plumbing Standards, Section two seventy dash eleven of the Altoona City Code, to provide provisions for permit renewals, annual permits, work before permits, and appeal fees, and to reaffirm the remainder of chapter two seventy. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
This ordinance was introduced by Vice Mayor Ickes. Ordinance number four is an ordinance of the city of Altoona, which amends and replaces chapter six forty-seven of the city of Altoona Code, local economic revitalization tax assistance, and enacts a new ordinance pursuant to the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act and the Improvement of Deteriorating Real Property or Areas of Tax Exemption Act establishing tax exemptions for real property located within deteriorated areas of the city designated by local municipalities and providing for the implementation thereof, including the contingency of adoption of concurrent legislation by other affected taxing bodies. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
This ordinance was introduced by Councilman Ellis. Ordinance number five is an ordinance of the city of Altoona, Blair County, Pennsylvania, which amends and replaces chapter four seventy of the Altoona City Code as it pertains to noise, to provide definitions, outline applicability and exemptions, provide enforcement procedures and penalties, provide severability of provisions, repeal her, and provide an effective date. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance? This ordinance was introduced by Councilman Ellis. Ordinance number six is an ordinance of the city of Altoona, Blair County, Pennsylvania, which amends chapter six forty-six dash twenty-five, discount and penalty for payment of real estate taxes of the Altoona City Code, which with respect to real estate taxes levied and assessed in the city of Altoona to provide a potential waiver of additional charges beyond the face value amount of real estate taxes for new homeowners beginning in the twenty twenty-three tax year pursuant to Pennsylvania Act fifty-seven of twenty twenty-two. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
This ordinance was introduced by Councilman Beatty. And last but not least, ordinance number seven is an ordinance of the city of Altoona and the county of Blair Commonwealth of Pennsylvania appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the municipal government hereinafter set forth during the year twenty twenty-three, better known as the twenty twenty-three budget ordinance. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
This ordinance was introduced by Councilman Butterbaugh.
Okay, we'll move on to city manager updates now. Omar?
Thank you, mayor and council members. Just a few things to point out here. One is to remind all of council that you are invited to attend the Altoona Water Authorities' meeting that'll be this Thursday at nine o'clock. There's gonna be an update from ESG regarding the digester project at the Westerly Plant, and I was, agreed, I mentioned that before, I just wanted to bring it up again because we're in that, that week, and it's been confirmed that that presentation will take place. Also want to point out that the next meeting of the Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan will be upcoming as well. That will be held December the fifth, the morning of December the fifth, at the Altoona Blair County Boardroom. In relation to this, somewhat tangentially, is that the city's senior leadership team has been working on a, developing a SWAT analysis in relation to their interactions with the city. We'll eventually present that to council, and we would like to thereafter present that and forward it to the Comprehensive, the Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan because we believe that that can be valuable to, to that group and to that process. And the other, other thing I have is that the Christmas parade downtown will take place on December first at six o'clock. If you have any questions or would like to talk about anything else, just let me know.
Omar, what time is on December fifth?
I believe it's ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock at A, B, C, D?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that all you have, Omar?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to council discussion items. Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, mayor. Omar, we had a number of public comments made tonight, and Attorney Finn referenced the letter from Mr. Bender's attorney, and that that would be responded to. I, I think, at least speaking for myself and maybe on others on council, we'd appreciate getting some feedback and update from what was raised tonight.
Yes.
To some of us, I'm sure that's the first time we're hearing some of it. It seems like there may have been some other issues that a couple members of council may have been involved with, but, but I know I was just speaking for myself, would appreciate hearing back from staff about that so we, you know, know what's going on here, so.
Absolutely will.
Okay? And that, you know, because this is our meeting for the month because of the holiday schedule, if I'm right, so.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you, appreciate that. That's, that's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carper?
I have nothing to add right now, mayor, thank you.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Nothing new. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Ickes?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Councilman Ellis?
Sure, I just want to take some time to express my appreciation to the city manager and the department heads for the great job they did putting this budget together. Not only did I think they were well within the parameters of what our community can afford, but the manager also gave us a real, a realistic vision of where we're gonna be at in a few years, and, and he put this, this budget together with the idea of filling some positions that are necessary for the city's success in the future, and utilizing these ARP monies, he was able to keep, keep a lid on the tax increase. But I think we all threw a very candid conversation at our last meeting, and I want to commend my fellow council members for speaking their minds and, and talking some, some real down-to-earth things of where we're at and where we're gonna be, so I think we all just have to keep that in mind going forward, and we have to appreciate the fact that the staff put together a fair budget, so, thank you.
Thanks. Councilman Beatty?
I'd just like to comment on the fact that, you know, if, if we get into a tax situation in the next two to three years for a tax increase, we have to do everything as a city to increase the revenue that comes in, whether it be developing homeowners, remodeling, you know, we have to raise the bar so that we make it easier for landlords to do business in Altoona, and homeowners to improve their property, and developers to come in and do what they do best and make it easy for them, start to have a systematic plan in place so that when someone calls Altoona to make inquiries into a development, that we are very structured in the way we present what needs to be done, whether it be zoning or variances or whatever. I think we need to coordinate how everything operates in the city, and then I think that would fall into implementing, I talked to the mayor today, and there's some case management or software in the city, and I'd like to see the city start to use that for controlling calls that come in, responses to calls, when problems arise, open a case on it, and then give us weekly updates as to how that's being resolved so that we get a little bit more structure in the way that the city operates and responds to complaints and inquiries. I just think that that would be better for the city overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the media, Bill?
Thanks. Is there, regarding the executive session, is there an, an actual litigation or is it just still potential? Or is there something you can give me a citation on, I guess?
I don't have a document number to give you, if that's what you're looking for.
You say you do.
I don't.
Oh, okay. But, yeah, that's what I was asking. Any comments from anybody on the criticisms that were leveled? Any comments from anybody on the criticisms that were leveled at the podium today?
Bill, as I indicated to Mr. Bender, you know, his attorney had sent a letter to codes, it was just last week, and, you know, we're going to be reviewing it and we will be providing a response to his counsel. But we want to make sure, you know, we do a review and provide a, you know, accurate and thoughtful response to it, so.
How about the other comments from other people who don't necessarily have that lawyer? The woman who identified herself as running Prince's Properties, she and then Ed Cruz also talked. Any comments on those?
That's why I asked the manager to give us a response on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Bill, I think that's one of those things that would fall under a case management system is that if a call came in and it was flagged and it would be open for a certain period of time and if it wasn't closed and resolved, that would be reported to Omar, you know, once it got to that level, if it still wasn't resolved in a certain period of time, it would move on to council. And I think all those type of issues should have a very structured chain of events so that, you know, we don't get black holes, you know, whenever we have problems in the city. You know, open discussion's good. I really appreciate people coming to city council meetings and making problems known, whether it's flooding, whether it's nuisance in the neighborhood, whether it's parks that are underutilized and need updated, like the one in Garden Heights. You know, those are the ways, the city, it's a fairly good-sized city, so, you know, whenever people take the time and come in and make these known, it really does help.
Okay. What is ECMI or ECMS, I guess, system, one of the?
And Nate, you can pipe in too. It's basically a system through the state as far as for construction projects. And it's basically a portal where they do everything through the state portal, is what that is.
It's just their contract management system.
Oh, okay.
It's PennDOT.
Yeah.
Anything that goes through PennDOT.
Gotcha. Regarding the budget, what is the, what is the tax situation? Is it going to be a tax increase or not?
No, the budget was introduced, how it was presented to us at the work session a few weeks ago.
So it's identical to the original proposed budget?
Yes.
Jesse, since you're the one that suggested a half mil increase, do you want to talk about what's happening now?
I mean, the existing budget does still have long-term structural deficits in it. We aren't shirking from those costs of the contracts over the long run and this governing body or whomever sitting here in a couple of years will ultimately be part of the discussion on how to handle those costs.
So, I mean, you're good with what's happening now with no tax increase?
It's doable.
Yeah. Bill, if I can just chime in on that, I think, you know, and Omar had referenced working on a five-year projection. And Omar, don't let me misquote you, but I think having that and having some numbers like that, and there's probably nobody that's more intimately acquainted with the finances of this city than Omar Strom, when you look at his years of experience there and then his finance director prior to being manager plus everything else he's done in the city. I mean, I think having something like that and being able to look ahead gives us a better idea of where we're going to be, looking at costs down the road. So rather, from my standpoint, and again, I don't want to speak for anyone else up here, but from my standpoint, until we have something like that, I think that'll give us a better roadmap going forward in the years to come. But, I mean, you know, Jesse's right, we're going to have some costs down the road to, as costs go up, as we have to meet the needs of the collective bargaining agreements, as the ARP money dissipates and goes away, and we're going to have to deal with that. But I think having that five-year projection will be a good tool for us to have.
The Pency property purchase, it is a purchase by the city, right? Is that the former downtown drug property?
Yeah.
And does that mean that the Pency project that was going to happen, is not going to happen now, or what?
I can't, we can't speak for Pency Properties, but they have agreed in principle to sell the property and that was the basis of the resolution tonight.
And what's the purchase price?
$68,500.
Okay. And why does the, why did the city buy it?
We are going to expand the police building.
Oh, okay, gotcha. I know you've told me about it before, but what's the cost of that project?
Well, we don't have the, you know, final numbers yet, but it's in excess of $3 million.
And that is for storage, Richard?
Yeah, I think we've talked about it before, but it's going to primarily be used to expand and modernize where we store our evidence, along with other, you know, upgrades that the building needs.
Is it a one-story addition?
Again, it's in the blueprint phase, but the idea would be two stories.
Okay. Is the $4 million loan that was, I guess it was an introduced ordinance, is that connected with the capital program that was also a resolution?
So really, it was an update to an ordinance from 2017 that put a limit on lease purchasing of fire department equipment, fire department vehicles at $2 million. We're looking at a new vehicle that would, if we go through with the lease, would have exceeded that $2 million. So it was just an idea of expanding the cap on that to $4 million.
Okay. So it's not really new borrowing, I just missed, okay. Could somebody explain what the additional enforcement of the conditional housing and residential rental resolution means?
Bill, this is just to add provisions for the revocation of rental licenses. Right now, we do have that provision in our ordinance. However, it doesn't really have any penalties associated with that. So that's basically what this outlines. If certain conditions, if certain conditions are met, or not met actually, then a rental can be revoked until such time that the reasons for the revocation are corrected and there will be now a fee to reinstate that license.
Okay. The LRTA, what's the extent of the LRTA?
What's the what?
What's the extent, the geographical extent of the LRTA?
The entire city, both commercial and residential properties.
And that's part of the broader one that other municipalities are participating in, correct?
No, this is our own.
Oh, okay. Any comment on the noise ordinance that was introduced?
I think we just have to give our people the tools that they need to get their jobs done. And as the chief explained to us, this is a more practical approach to dealing with the noise, the noise issues.
And, sorry, I have so many questions. The ordinance six, the waiver, could somebody explain that?
Bill, what that is, is earlier this year, the governor signed Act 57 of 2022 and basically this is in compliance with that. It was like, for the scenario, like some new homeowners would not get like a real estate tax bill because there's a period of time from when the transfer occurs and perhaps, you know, and this isn't just Blair, this is like throughout the state, there's a period of time until the new ownership information is placed in the assessment office, transferred to the local tax offices. And what the legislators felt was there are scenarios where someone who's a new owner wasn't getting the tax bill notice, perhaps it was going to the former owner and it wasn't getting forwarded to them. And by the time they become aware of it, it's already in penalty. So this, that's generally the gist of Act 57 and we were required, as well as all other municipalities, to amend the applicable ordinance to reflect these provisions of Act 57.
You got partway through and then I remembered you was talking about that before, sorry.
That's all right.
And then, I guess finally, Omar, you referred to a SWAT analysis that the management is going to undertake. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so SWAT analysis looks at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And we're looking at that in terms of the city operations and the city itself and also at the department level. So it's a multifaceted analysis. So strengths and weaknesses would be internal strengths or weaknesses. Opportunities and threats would be representative of the external environment.
And this is something that the staff is doing itself?
Yeah, it's, they provided me with a lot of information and it's really up to me to put it together and kind of review it with them before I move on to council with it.
You mean it's already been done, or? And you, it's not like a consultant isn't doing this, it's just?
It's all in-house.
Okay, and it'll become part of the comprehensive plan?
Well, I can't say that. All I'm saying is it'll be presented to council early next year and then after that, my thought would be to provide it to the Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan to be used however, you know, they want to use it or not used at all, really.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
Meeting is adjourned.